Hello everyone, we are live and let me check if we are. Streaming fine on all the platforms. Okay, yep, so Kikis live and Twitch is live as well, so all good. It's time I say the vertical one I'm not doing now because it's it's not easy setup it we have to do it every time when I post. So see if I can find a way I can post automatically. Yes, so here I'll wait for few minutes for everyone to join then we will continue with our stuff. So say hello in the chat if you're watching, I love to hear from you. So let's give it few minutes, I fire up some stuff. So the goal of today is we'll show some things which I found. Uh which I use normally, yeah, so I'll show those and then we will just. Continue basically with the with checking on update on the server. How many people are posing? And see the updates. So yeah, I'm prepared. Okay, let's give it a minute. Okay, while I wait for some messages in the chat, I wanted to showcase something other I have. Imagine R G three five X X H, it's like a long name, I have this, I bought uh. Uh I think Miumini for my nephew. Uh last year I bought this for myself and and actually I love it like was you say like I have. I'm trying to set it up because um that one broke which my nephew had. So I am setting it up this one, so I'm putting you know all the stuff in there, so it have all the. Retro games in here, so it's just fun basically, yeah. So yes, this is basically it's it's nice and I'm I'm trying to install games in here, try to play. And like if I show, so this is, I think everyone might have played N E S game, so it have it's. Currently downloading the box art here from the net, so it will take some time that like I installed Rome. Rom's in there and you know all the good stuff. I can show you how to get like if you're interested how to know this but it's like fun, it's so much fun. And 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 as a kid I didn't have any console only N E S like Chinese version of the N E S console was there. I played games like Mario Contra and all, but I never played all the others, so basically now. Basically I have all of them here, I I will try, I tried to set it up in my phone also but then uh it was not that good. And I have this, my, you know, my old spare phone is here, so I tried to set it up in that. And I also tried to set it up in my hard drive, but this one is, you know, everything is is have basically. All the consoles still P S two. This way it it can it can play a few of P S two but I don't I think till P S P at least is good. Uh in there but not high end uh ones it can play but on phone. Your phone is good enough to play till P S two and just it just need. A bunch of setup, this is right now running on uh, see there's P S P and then there is a. You know PlayStation also, so it's it's good. It's called War, that's the reason, God of War is the reason I'm in. So yeah, this is I'm basically having fun with, uh so yeah. Hello, sure, hello, how are you? I'm doing good, I'm doing good, uh just bit busy with a lot of stuff, uh how's how's your thing? How's everything else? Are you able to focus on stuff and how's life in general? Uh I have I have one of these God, it just play Metal Slug what? Oh, just to play Metal Slug, okay, okay. That's that's, I haven't played because I heard a lot about Metal Slug, I don't know which which console, uh if I know, i- is it available in multiple console? Or just in this, uh or or just P S P, I can search, I don't know if I can search in here. So if I can search somewhere, but I guess cool, like I I'm I was playing a few games, I just played. And this is also also right, this is also a good inspiration, like when you want to make a game. I tried to recreate Invaders and Mario uh in with different uh little bit of different touch. And and it have really cool games like which are really like pixelated games. Uh I if I can find, I don't know if it will be history, I don't know if I can find it somewhere. So there was. I don't know if I can find a history. Little airstrike basically, so so it was a really pixelated game. Uh and and you can play it actually online also and if this is a. I think it was M S X or I don't know how to. I should have marked. Or Intervision maybe, Intervision maybe. What is Intervision? This i- and this seems like the, you know, old time we used to have uh things in our P C. I lost Intervision. Yeah. So let me run, so it's an Intervision, so it's like really pixelated one. Look at this. So there are like these targets uh at the bottom, so you have to, you basically drop the bomb on them. It's so much fun, I like honestly. And I wish like I would, I would love to recreate this game if it's possible, so that's in there. I've been busy with some work, didn't have much time to uh work on portfolio piece yet, it's okay, it's okay, it's a holiday time also coming maybe. You'll find time or maybe just enjoy the holidays, no need to stress too much, yeah. Yeah, I haven't played much, so that's why it's like so much, uh I feel excited to play all these games. Uh because I didn't play, uh then because as I said, N E S I have. Then I think after that I directly played a little bit of PlayStation one and then PlayStation two most. Because we had this game parlor in the in our society, there was a shop where you can play the game, so they had P S twos. And then P S three and P S four also came but didn't have money to basically play. So then I played P S four uh maximum in uh when I joined Druva. So with in the studio they had P S four and with with big uh you know screen. So they had bunch of games, so I borrowed from friends or even buy my own games, so that was fun. So I played a lot of games while there, so on weekends I would buy a game like Uncharted. Last of Us, God of War, all I played there, uh I didn't have console till then, my P C was also not that good to play game. But that PlayStation I abused and when I came uh here to join Hangar thirteen, they actually gave me. Uh so you can borrow the PlayStation and I borrowed it, I bought games, so I played a lot. Uh yeah, n- not that much as much I played before but it was fun. So yeah, so let's, I wanted to show one, two things which I found really interesting, so I will show you once, first those, okay, so. It can, okay, I hope you can see me, oh yeah, so the screen is wrong. Wait, I need to change it to this, yep. Change it to this, perfect. Okay, so yeah, so this is basically. The uh we used to use One Drive for most of the stuff we used to work on. Just one minute, uh let me. For this, okay. So uh when we used to work on things, we used to use One Drive for transfer stuff, like you know One Drive is there, so. So One Drive there is uh, one good thing is there, which I really appreciate that it use. You know. Well, this one, this is coming and check stupid stuff. I N E N, let's see if it comes in, yeah, it's okay. So yeah, so basically why I really appreciate this is basically I I have the space in my drive here. And whoever upload data in in my shared link, it will come in my One Drive. And and I can easily share, I I like this one against the Google Drive because. Google Drive need everyone like the family pack basically, the if you can have family pack. But if if your home country is different in your Google account and and all your family member have. Different account, it does not allow you to add them, they say they need to have in this be in the same country, I was in U K, so I could not add anyone. And Play Store does not allow you to show app, local app, so. If I keep it India and then it don't show me the banking apps and all from the Play Store. So that's another issue, so I couldn't change it to U K then it don't let me add other people as family member. So the then this one was best because this does not care, basically I can add anyone. Uh my friends and I had few meals and the you know plan was cheaper. Compared to, so compared to. You know, uh compared to Google, so Google give you, uh let's say, uh Google. On family plan. So let's see. So good one account is here, so it's a, so you get. I don't know how to convert it, how to change the currency, where is the currency? It takes automatically my location but it's okay, so here it is uh like two terabyte. But it in in One Drive, it was almost the same price, right? And there is business but then there is family uh without team. Let me see if there is a family, because there is a family where you get all these things. Right, not the business stuff will is not there, the project management tool and teams and everything, but you get. One terabyte plus you can add four people I think, so you get five terabyte basically, the same price. But then from this year they raised the price which I did not like, right, and I didn't wanted to use it anymore. So what I did, I tried to find a new system which I found Resilio Sync. Okay, so what Resilio Sync is, it is basically I have a folder on my drive which I uploaded online, right? So Resilient Sync is is free, right, well, you can get a free license for personal use. And that sync, so if someone want to sync certain file from my drive that from that particular folder, they can sync. So I control what I want to share, whom I want to add in there, so Resilient Sync works best for me and I'm using it for the team sharing project. So imagine two people are working on this one unreal project, I can put one project in there and then I put. You know, second uh some second person when they share have it, it works basically. So they I can work on content folder, save the file, it gets synced to o- other people also. And then they can open the project and yeah, so basically it's like P four V without a server. You can create a server also with this and your own local host also, I think it's open source and this is awesome. So yeah, I I love this uh this thing and I think it is. Inverted like this, so yeah, so Resilio Sync is uh one uh one of the, you know, good platform. And then the I for, this is for this and then for remote work, I used to use. Hmm Parsec, so if you don't know Parsec, Parsec was to, you know. To get remote access to your P C. And it works, this is the fastest one and the best reliable one I found out for that. The and it was was good until this one thing because if you have their paid plan, if you need to use the pen sensitivity. And you want to use a dual screen, then that is paid version, I had the paid version for certain extent. But then uh I was like, okay, I don't need, see? So it's uh it's it's not that much for personal, one person also, ten dollar a month is okay, right, if you're using. So I can access my both of the screen, pen centered, uh you know, see here. Uh Wacom tablet and everything tilt and everything works basically in here, this was good, but then I did not use it much. And I needed something else, uh then I found Rust Desk. Okay, so Rust Desk is open source remote desktop tool and you can use their own, uh it's open source. You can use both of the screens without any issue, I you can control uh the P C and there are two factor authentication is there. You put your I D password and then put the your code, you get the access. Even if your P C is locked, you can unlock it, I don't know if it can start or uh you know if it can start the P C. Right, that that is the only thing I'm trying to sort right now, but this is the one best thing I found out that works basically. So use uh Rust Desk if you need to access your thing, Resilient Sync if you want to sync. So what I'm using this also like I have uh on my system, I have Obsidian. Right, Obsidian on my phone and also on my system. I just put it into Resilient Sync folder and it syncs onto my phone also and also that you can use for photos as well. So whatever photos comes in the camera folder, you can sync, it automatically gets synced on your computer. Without any cloud or anything, so it's just your P C drive and you think you buy one external drive or S S D, you can put it directly to that. So to start, you just need internet, that's the only thing, so when you get to the Wi-Fi, it starts syncing. Uh you sync all the photos and that's fine and then you can share those uh there. Uh and the only thing is like One Drive have, you can share the same folder in there and I don't want to you do. This thing you, nobody can browse it online, that's the only thing, and for that, one thing I'm using a lot is Transferit. So. Transferit is, if if I click on compare, I used to use WeTransfer to transfer things, but I now use Transferit. I don't know for how long it will be free but it's totally fine to use it, so basically there is no size limit, there is no, you know. You know how many number of transfer, it will be changed, they say after one jari it will be only hundred downloads. But it's fine, like we are sharing it for personal stuff and this is basically a super fast. So whenever I need to, you know, we need to share, the Zillow sync is super slow. Uh for some reason, it should be fast because I have gigabit internet, so. If I, when I upload, needed to upload like ten G B of the Unreal project, it uploaded in a minute basically, so. It's super speed, Resilio is slow, so I just send this through Resilio Sync basically, oh sorry, through Transferit. So whatever I need to send quickly and it stays for ninety days, no need to borrow, so if you need to back up something for s- for some time, like imagine you are vacation, you need. To hold your pictures, right, put them into zip folder with a password, like if it's a sensitive thing. Put them into zip folder with us, you can do it with a phone also and upload it to Transferit and then you can download it later on. It's it's reliable in that sense, so but if you want to be like, you know, super sure and everything. Then you know you can send it to through, you know, just send it to your system, open it. You know, I usually some, uh I upload it here, I open my P C using Rust Desk and download it there basically. So it's much more quicker than Resilio Sync, so these are the like app I wanted to show you, okay? So that's, I hope, I hope it was excessive one which I'm using every day, I thought you guys should know also and I'm doing a bunch of A I stuff also. Uh I will just add this one which I really, so there is, this app is called O Lama, okay? Just go, don't go with this, it's just like a random search I made, but there is uh different models, okay? So there are, what I did, I just downloaded the smallest one which is one billion, which is like very super quick. But they have like seventy four, one twenty billion also, right? So these are like online one, not this one, but here you see twenty seven and there is Lama, but you can search more also online. So once you, then you put anything I need to, what I wanted to share with this is. This you can access on the backend, if this app is running, you can use this app anywhere, uh in any app. What I did, I used this in Blender add-on to write metadata on assets. I will show you once it's complete, uh uh maybe after when we do our next live stream. Uh maybe next year or maybe in December, right, I will show you. So basically it add the metadata and description, tags and everything using A I. So it's super quick, like imagine I select, okay, give me uh ten baby names. And it will do it on the back end and we are using one billion parameter and it takes one time to load, this is the first time. But then afterward it's super quick, right, so it, what is it going to internet or what? Because what you can do is you can run it in the command and also this something, see? Okay, so you get basically quick, so it might not be you know super up to date and accurate but. You need something for your text and description, like imagine I see okay, uh I have. Um luxury. Share model. Give me a nice name. Description of fifty words and ten one word tags. To upload online, okay? Did you see the speed? See, it gave me a name, seven four sense the beauty again, suggest, see? Furniture crafted, detail luxurious and then elegance, see, give ten words. And and you can say, okay, give me tags without. Numbering and just with comma separation. Look at that, did you see the speed? Use this, now you can use it in your, you know, from your command prompt window. From any software you can do, there is this local host link, I will show you, like I guess it's mind boggling, like I. For me at least, I'm not a technical guy that much, so when I achieved this, I was like super happy. Something more, it's offline, it's not going anywhere, it's not on internet, but you can ask it to go to internet but it's there, see? So easy busy, make your work easy, it it these are the bunch of fun stuff before the holiday season, I thought like I should let you know. All these things I'm using, other than the third thing because I'm managing bunch of guys. Projects and this thing, these are really help me and along with that I just remember. Uh one thing, what was the name of Excel Draw, I think? Okay, so it's Excel Draw here, so it's just a whiteboard, it's like Miro board and. Pure Ref, but online people can collaborate with the plus, I think you can only get one and you can compare the prices. But the fun thing is, it's open source, you can download and install it on your P C. Okay, and then you can share the Excel draw file you can download from here, okay, you can download and share from here and simply. There and you can live collaborate also, you can se- start a session, share this link and people can join this in. I I still haven't figured out how to sta- set up a local server where people can join it because I want to set it up for my. Uh uh. For my team, basically I because it just only allow one, right, so I'm trying to set it up basically, you know, in there. Yeah, so yeah, that is there, so it's basically, yeah, it's a it's a nice tool. Right, but it's limited, so I'm trying to figure out like how to remove, reduce this limitation, I have already installed it on my. My local, so you can simply go to GitHub. It's like a bunch of stuff I've done, uh so here's a GitHub, so you can install it. And yeah, so this is really cool, so you can download, install it on your P C and voila, all for first stuff. Uh and the lastly, I did the one thing, uh I will just not showcase that, there is nothing to showcase, but the. I'm, I have still haven't got that feature to, you know, put Hindi audio in my videos but. I I'm hoping soon I will get, so what I'm doing, I'm finding A Is which it can automatically do it, basically. Because all these live streams are in in English and I want to do it in Hindi or maybe Punjabi or other languages. So there I did not find a A, but now I found one which is really decent, but it is, it does not do this expressions. And emotions, it's just, you know, someone reading news from the paper, simple like that. So yeah, so that's pretty much it, uh let's read the chat and. Uh welcome, I have a question, is it necessary to learn Substance Designer for being an environment artist? Uh it's not necessary but it is nice to have, this is it also depend on the team and the projects where you might need it. Right, uh I haven't actually used Substance Designer to that extent. So imagine I needed to, at one point I needed to make, you know, season variation of the leaves. So Substance Designer had and we can make node graphs where we can put, you know, seasonal variation quickly. Turning green to orange, putting, you know, uh those edge damages in the leaf, uh even making it brown. Maybe more crumbly or maybe uh you know putting snow on top. So that all things were possible using Substance Designer quickly, so I knew that much, so it is, it were useful. Uh and other one, I would say, uh you know, when you have zebra sculpts and you want to make textures. So there's a ZBrush to Substance Designer pipeline, you can use that, uh it's nice to have because when you want to tweak the textures or want to make tileable textures. It will come handy when the time is, I mean, we need, we were making a, so something like that, like Gmentin Origin Blender, right, it's for most of the people, it's not useful. But as an environment, we have a way, I have shown multiple ways like making debris, making damages and other stuff, it's it comes handy when you know. At least basics and at least you can do, you know, changes, enough changes to for your thing, so. Uh it's not necessary but it's a it's a plus, so I would suggest to learn it. Um Leah says, yes, uh hello dear, how are you? Thank you for joining in, uh especially nine out of ten times you start the journalist, non-artist, substance designer, painter, zbrush, blender, unreal. It's usually, yes, so at one point like basically uh everybody asks you, you know, substance designer, say yes, you know, Hoodini, I said yes. But I never used it, uh because there are substance, there are guys who are making textures in Substance Designer. But what if there is something you want to tweak, what if you want to mix two material together? So you should have something in there or. You don't want to wait for it to send to, you know, material guys and then they will do it and come back. It's nice to have it and for like Hoodini also like is the tech artists make the tools, but you should know how to use it at least, no? So if you don't even know the basics of Hoodini. Then it will be trouble, but you can learn it later on also, but it's a plus if you already know the basics, so at least basics you can learn. It's free to install, it's apprentice, take a apprentice license and mix, follow some tutorials, at least know how things work in. In uh. In Hoodini, at least understand how proceduralism works, basically Substance Designer, Hoodini, Gmentin Notes. Uh it will unreal have, you know, P C G, shader graph, all things better D. Uh again, yeah, as Ria said, that's true, so you kind of become environment journalist. So you need to know as you will progress in your career as a senior, it will be expected. For for a starting guy, it will might not be expected like unreal, zbrush, painter and one modeling tool is fine, right? Uh but as you progress mid level, okay, you get substance design and other stuff. Uh sure. Just dive into it, it just take one week to, you know, get hang of the things. Uh Milan, welcome, not necessary. Uh Milan, welcome. Not necessary, but I could be learned important to find, yes, awesome. Vishwas, hello, 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 hello Milan. Thank you very much again for coming. Hey man, I found something new for foliage. Have you tried sapling tree generally now? Yes. Yes, uh it was a, a lot of people generated trees, you know, but again. Uh my, my issue with that is like I don't have that much control, but, but as a, as a artist, we need control on everything. Like how branches are growing, how much thickness I want or anything, everything I want to control that thing. So that is not there, so because it's, I just, we just want Lego pieces, you know, so we can put everything together, but it's a really good tool. And we will cover it in our, uh when we again gonna start with our live stream, we definitely gonna cover it also in one of the stream. And because I haven't played with it for a long time, so we'll see how much it progressed and how we made. But thank you very much for bringing it again, I will do. Yeah, yeah, uh Milan, you told me about Excel draw. I, I remember like someone in the, there, but thank you very much. It was you. And I, I tested it out, but that thing is like it only have one. And I would say like if I need to, you know, download and share it with people, I will rather use Pure Ref. So I found that one is there, but Excel draw house is nice, but if we can do the live thing, I don't know if uh. If you guys also make each one of you and then you share in the live and then we go on it, like we can try that out. It will be nice and like seem like my mirror board and a mirror, I don't know if it allow collaboration. Uh to edit things, it just let you view things. So I don't know how much limitation it is, we need to check. Uh yeah, uh Leah, thank you very much. Yeah, just have fun. Uh for team Figma works right. Uh Figma I also have tried, um. I made presentation also in there, like it felt too heavy of a system. And 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 for collaboration, I used, you know, whiteboard also, but Google killed it. It's, it's crazy. And where we are. Here with, nice to have you, yeah, yeah, nice to have you also. Man, Houdini precision methods extremely amazing, yeah, this. You know, the, is Houdini, I, that's why I got into in there, but then it was like so much to catch up, so I quit on Houdini at one point because. Every job interview is like, you know, Houdini, that's nice, but then I never used it. They never gave me anything related to Houdini, so I was like, guys, what the hell? Why did you even ask? Like, oh, okay, it's nice, you know, Houdini, we need it, so. But they never needed it, they never asked. So that's a waste, but I want to get back to it again. Um Leah knows, I shared multiple times, I want to at least try, you know, the nuts sura tools. As foliage creation tool, so that's I want to get into that. And you know, there are these uh pipelines, you know, baking pipelines, making tileable textures and stuff like that. It's all awesome. Well, I love Houdini and how powerful and, you know, things are there. And I, I, you know, like, uh I, I don't know, like how many years ago, like four or five years ago only I have it, uh thing, like let me see if I can see it again on Facebook. It was coming in my, uh in there, like I will show you long time back. Uh you have memory, it was saying you have a memory. I was like, okay, give my memory back, that is it. And. Okay, it's not letting me read my notification, what a stupid system. It is. Okay, where is it, where is it, where is it, where is it? Memories, there are so many, now I'm, I will not be able to find it. But it's okay, I will share in the chat, I will show you. I made this procedural brick, I think Ryan Kinglin, Kingslin. Did this uh small workshop of Houdini like long time back, uh for five years, I think he also was trying it out. And I just watched it and then I, you know, add little bit on top, you know, going through the whole pipeline to baking it till. Making it a game aside basically, was fun. Uh what did you did something, hello, I'm getting delivered a less time. Yeah, could be, there will be a little bit delay, definitely. Uh go the, appreciate, Leah, you are awesome, like you are already doing crazy stuff in Houdini in there. Yeah, uh and uh, yeah, my print is, this apprentice version is there, it's easy to install. Yeah, uh now, what? From apprentice version, now you can export F B S, yeah? Like, I didn't know. I thought like it's still locked, like you can, you can only open the saved file in apprentice version also, you can't export anything out of it. Like even not even H D or anything else, that I, long time back, it was like that, bro. I guess new content money coming in. Did you change the plan? It's performing better now. What? I don't know. Um. Uh yeah, man, I wanted to share, I won't be, uh I won't be able to do your timestamp in the. Listen, I pick some work a little, totally fine Milan, like. Whatever you did, totally appreciated. I also was doing a little bit of timestamp on few videos, but I really appreciate how much you do. Don't worry about it. It's okay, maybe I will use the auto-generated, you know, videos and put into A I and ask it to create timestamps. Yeah, so you're just, that's so wonderful, guys, awesomely awesome. Let's look at what people are doing. And I need to uh restart my Discord because all the images are gone. Give me a second. Yeah, this, uh yeah, share me like the thing, like I will, I will not upload the video, but I will upload the subtitles. So what I can do it. Auto-automatically do the subtitles. So I will put those subtitle into A I and ask it, okay, do automatically timestamps. I'm gonna do it and you get, I think, ten generation of uh. Chat G P T Pro uh for uh. About every day or for five year, fi- five hours, every five hours. So at least I will use that, no? So. Screw them, I will not be, pay them stupid amount of money. Yeah, but share it, share it, okay? Uh which word tool you have? And. Here, okay, so. We have some fun stuff and there are people who are not applying. It's sad, we only have one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, twelve and fourteen people updating. I don't know if they're updating, but there were people who were updating things, we was gonna poke everyone again soon. So here Vishwas doing Vishwas stuff. That was funny. Noise glitch, epilepsy warning. Please do the epilepsy warning before. I want to trigger, I should not laugh at that, but that will be worse for them. Yeah, please put epilepsy warnings. Oh. Too, too much, love, love the, the. But there's like some artifacts are coming, but nice. I think it's, it's doing the. You know, what we call, ray tracing, quickly, so it's taking time from larger dots to small, did some changes. We don't need to do that much, we can do like the hologram type of thing, we can keep it less. I would say, and we focus on mainly on this, we can put some lights here as well, so this area is lit. Not just inside, so people are sitting here can see their bowels also properly. Like here we can see some, some, something is there, is it, where from this light is coming, from inside? And this light I can see also from where, I don't know, but it's, it's softer here which is nice and we need to, there is something. Oh, there is this, okay, it's coming from this, okay. It's coming from this uh strip, okay. But the, this area I would say like we can light it up, maybe more will be nice. Ah, nice, nice, nice. Like for, for, for live music faces awesome, you can reach out to them. I can make live. Program for you based on music, that was awesome. It's nice, it's nice. Yeah, I would say like the, let's focus more on, on our main area. Make it more lit and keep surrounding a little bit dark. Like even this highlight is, is okay, but we can, you know, reduce it to make our main focus here rather than other, oh, you changed this, nice. Nice, nice. Advertisement everywhere, no? Future. No, it's Edward doing crazy stuff. What is this? What? What are those other vehicles? There are a lot of vehicles. No need to place that many. Uh nice. Overall, I like it, the fog we can send a little bit further. Uh but overall, what is, uh is, this is. Okay, uh overall, I think almost done with this scene, need to replace some muscle and remaining blocking. I think we can still polish things, this, this le, this flag seems too thick and think we can make them look like a. Clothes, thin, and we can move the fog little bit away and put some chairs inside our train also. And yeah, more focus at all. We have colors and everything, so we need to make them popper. With the hazy thing, it's not visible that much. Even this, there are floating rocks here. Place here, nice, you added stairs, that's nice touch, showcasing that people come from this way. Few people will come from this way also. And yeah, it's nice. Uh I thought I would learn some tips about presentation of the scene and the lighting, haven't learned that much more. Uh yeah, so the, basically what we need to move the fog away, so our scene is in counter, you can use more lights uh in general. Right? To showcase that, okay, there are some details and like we can put light in here on top to light this area as well. If you want to showcase that. And yeah, so this we can clearly show like, okay, there is a, this cart is, you know, linked to these wires, which we can clearly show. And these flags and everything have these different colors which we can, you know, showcase, we, this we need to make more contrasty, at least. Don't rush to finish with the scene. Uh and I had other diseases I had to do lately and slow progressing and finish other stuff. It's totally fine, even if it take time, I would say just take your time, don't stress too much about it, don't beat yourself up. That's what I have realization also, like when I uh cancel my scene also, but uh don't worry too much, okay? Don't beat yourself up. Uh if you uh, you know, really struggling, you don't have, you have other responsibility, then it's fine. I would say, just put it. But if you can put a little bit more time to polish things around, I would suggest just do it, right? Uh but again, I don't want you to, you know, blame yourself or, you know, even just um um get done with this and move on. Uh I did that because I, I know I was putting so much pressure on myself and then I said, okay, I don't have time to finish it. And I'm just putting more expectation on myself that does not, you know, align well. But there is one thing I think you can do, you can re-sample your curve here. So I think this will add more points so you can change. You can watch our spline tutorial, uh not tutorial, spline fun when we had on our terrain. So we changed it and you can, you know, have more. I think it's coming only on the points where the points are, seems like it. And then you can put, you know, transform it and project it on the surface also. But these are, I think, too many. You could reduce it. And yeah, so overall it's good and yeah, we can blend things up a little bit more, uh overall just keep going. Okay, and you can remove this pillar from here, because this is the entrance door to the station. It's coming in the way, even this pillar, we need to move it on the side. You can have on the both side because we don't want anything on the way to the stations, so that's usually normal. You know, here, reduce and all these see, this stone is there, uh like this stone have different material, this a different material, just see if it can have same material. Also we can blend it a little bit more better, you know, by, you know, either. Uh you know, um you know, modeling it, this thing, or just placing, making this lip at the bottom. Uh arch uh to the sand and then it blend, you know, nicely, you can place it properly there. So yeah, and if it is not, we can try out R V T, I know you asked long time back, I did not test it out with, if it works with the geometry or not. But we can test it out if R V T works with this. But overall, a good stuff, uh we're almost there, uh just reduce the haze. And then we see, look at overall scene, uh from if you want to keep some still angles, place some cameras and uh. And then we focus on those, okay? We will not go beyond those. Uh so like this is one camera and other camera, you have the image you want to keep this one. And then we see whatever is not looking right in this camera and we fix that, okay? So that will actually reduce, like you don't have to fix every corner, everything, just few stuff which will help you, you know, focus on and then we can finish stuff. Awesome, Liam, with awesome stuff. The, yes, and then you make me feel envious, like, okay, man, I wish I could do all this stuff. I wouldn't have, I wish I would not quit Houdini, or I would have got opportunity to work with Houdini in the companies. I would have made some stuff at least, but I don't blame them, I blame myself, I did not focus that much. A bit of bits with a brief uh years of my life, I was just traveling and enjoying life, so I don't blame myself also. Uh yeah, nice, cool stuff. This is a motor, this one, this uh behind, behind these bricks are this, is this motor? This one, overall like I like, now there is more blend, this corner, is the stair is also procedural. Around it, that's crazy. We just need the top railing part also. With, with rope knots, procedure of rope knots with procedural railing. Uh you crazy, that's, that's a lot of details. And now you're adding that, uh you add doors, inside we need stairs. That will be super crazy. Man, damn, you are crazy. That's a lot, lot of proceduralism. I was like, anyway, I was like, every day you post, it's so fascinating, like this is. There's a last time I saw, not last time, but the one in this uh, with the name of this open source game. Not open source, uh open world game from Ubisoft, what is the name of that? Rainbow Siege, not Rainbow Siege, is it, the one? Where there are a bunch of guys, they go on missions. I think I have seen this house demo in there. So they have made some procedural houses there, so I, last time I saw in there. Showcasing, making multiple house from boxes, that's crazy. It's nice. I wish you do with geometry node also, like that's what I want to do with geometry nodes. Uh I know it's difficult, but I want to do it. That will be super awesome if I will be able to do this also in, even in, in geometry node also. I would be happy. Nice, nice. Nice, you're making tools. Like it will be crazy, like if you're going to make everything, all these and everything, boxes, even this and everything, are those procedural also? Don't tell me all these boxes, cylinder and everything are, everything is procedural. Damn, you crazy. Get a life. Man, that's so much, uh crazy, that's craziness. So for the motor, I would say, uh uh. Because I've seen on your post, I think you posted on here also, I see. So this, blend this first. If you can, if, if, if motor mask is also like this, it go not gonna, it gonna show up like that. So I would say this smooth out the mask. So if you smooth out the mask with the height map of, of one of the thing. Even uh either motor and or the underneath wall, I would say then it will work because. People usually do the material blend, so you open in substance, do height blend and then you, we have seen, we get this mask, right? So under that. So under that, so if there is crevices, we get those, you know. A de- uh breakup in the in those hard lines. And also we can put some noise in there so we can have because. Uh I don't know how they are using mortar. They might be mixing it with some sand and some pebbles or anything at least, tiny ones at least. Something to bind it. If even if it's not, there will be some lumpiness. Right? So yeah, so just blend it with some noise and uh and also you can do this. They do with the tool, right? The um what what we call them? Uh these civil guys, civil engineer guys who put this. I don't know in English what we call them. These smiths, stones, they are not smiths, but I don't know. Uh if you know, let me know. So they do with this tool, they make these, you know, strokes in there also, so that it is pressed against the wall. And covered or even if it's done with the in the corner, they filled it like a trim. So there will be some organic st-ness will be there. So we can break it into smaller. Can we see? Uh let me see if we can see something. Hmm stone wall motor castle. What is this? Castle. Images. This is the one, this is not that one, but we are looking to. Because this is within the stones. This one could be nice. There is they they have failed. I think this is like repaired afterwards. There is nothing visible in here. This is also like something like this. So like if they will fill it, there will be some break about. Like this like going up, down, this noise, that will be there. Um so that's what you can add in the corners also, I believe. Have any good reference like see. If they have this corner, they will fill it with this thing. So if it spill over other stones. That will be you know will be more organic rather than next straight strip. Hmm even if it stays, just keep it inside the two crevices. Right? So imagine this is the this is the outer brick and this is internal and just keep it inside that. But it will still wherever it come. Okay, so wherever it will spill, it will give this noise, you know, organic result. Wherever it will spill or go on top of that. It depends on the height also like if it is like too high that it will be depending on how the shape of the brick is. So just blend, work with that. Uh hide and or if you don't have that, just put some noise, I would say. In uh in 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 one point, what we did, if I give you example of uh. Castle arch. Motor. Let's see if we find something here. I wanted to show. There's a there's a one thing we did. If I find it. Could be but not exactly. So let me see. Not much, but I will I will show you the example what we did. So if I take this in here and. So what happens? So like imagine this corner right here where you have this wall and this different brick wall. And we need to blend blend these two in here. So. At one point what we did, we did displace those, that dis- put displacement here and put displacement here, it naturally blended. Okay? And in one point what we did, we put a strip of mesh here and displaced it. So it's like we place some uh so what you can do when you measure this surface and this surface intersecting. You get this line where the two surfaces intersect. And then you can give it thickness and some noise and that work as like you know this uh. Binding glue or welding puppies, right? And yeah, so that look more natural than you know and then you can play with what is black. Put little bit of what is this uh same motor here, same motor on the other surface, it blend well basically. So that we use another trim and that's what I showed in our previous chapters also, right? So we are uh simply you normal blend or mesh blend plus uh you can place mesh decals. And we used to cheat in the old times with just uh alpha uh with uh you know decal with alpha. So it's an L-shaped mesh. Uh so you know L-shaped mesh basically, which is like sculpted. And and without with smooth normals, we just put it there. So it gives this fake link and I think I have seen it in uh on art session. I will show you. Um God of War Colts. I don't know if it is there. Uh but it was long time back. So there are no, I will not be able to find it now. It was if I even able to find the profile of that guy who had it, is it him? So they what they did is really crazy stuff. They blended it. I don't know if I saved it or not. But but they I can show you if I find it ever. I don't think it was in the old God of War, not this one. So I've shown it in one of the stream also but where they have placed a mesh in those crevices of the rocks. So where the two rock surfaces are joining and. You can do it and please be findable. So I can save or maybe I have it in my other thing. It's not him. Let's just look at quickly. It's all like breakdown of God of War. Shade of war. I will if I find it again, I will send you. I will but that was basically the thing. Okay, so interesting sounds with the mesh tickle with displacement. Yeah, that's the preferred sources that I get here every time is gold. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it but we'll try to support each other. Uh best again. But that's that's basically it. Um and I think you can if you go through our. Stream, I don't know if it is there. Uh quickly go over where we discussed those mesh normals. Where we were blending to before we did uh our uh. You know virtual texture one, that stream we discussed. I don't have the timestamps. That's why I should have documented all the streams. Right there and then. Uh it would have been easy but it's okay, it's okay. No one is blaming anyone. And over rocks, let me search, just one search and then we will just, otherwise move on. This one I will see. It was old God of War, I know that much. It was not the new one. And if I even find the guy who was. I've seen. Not this one. And not this one. Not this one. Yeah, this guy. Wait wait, I will find it. So here in in these crevices, right? Well, if they will place these two with. Okay, so there is. Let us go quickly over. His work, so we will hopefully hopefully find it. Okay, this is for the terms. I see here, uh yeah, I hope I hope this one have it. Otherwise, uh will that image is good one. We showcase. Here. Found it. Perfect. Chat. Go crazy. Do you see? So this is how the seam look like and they place the geometry with this alpha and voila, seams are gone. So if I go in the top image here, you see, so it's uh. These uh corners, all these are blended well, like here there is a geometry, this geometry. It's going a little bit more nuts on this thing. Need to do it. But this like oh no, we want to have much more realism like because this floor and this pillar will not blend well. So they created this blending piece in here. So which have this alpha noise and alpha noise on both side. And just you know place in all the corners and I think with you you are. Houdini wizard, you want to figure out easily quickly how to get those lines and how to you know exclude it. And I definitely remember I have seen someone making this uh these uh. These corner edge damage decals and this corner decals using Houdini. So I I'm definitely sure it's possible. So yeah, so just go crazy. So they have did this everywhere. Edward, is it just R V T or just message? It's a message. It is message only because they they have their own engine, I believe. So they're using this tech- technique here. Okay. So they're using this match decal technique here and and there is one technique where you use just normal map. And with alpha, so it just, you know, use the same texture with normal map, maybe something like that. So what it does, it just add this normal edge damage de- details or you use alpha but just at the damage. So what it does, it just showcase, you know, there is damage in here, but actually there is not, nothing. Such as that. So like this this is like it's blended but it's not, it's just we are faking. So that's what we do most of our time. Um that's why these level feel like they were chiseled from one piece, yes. So they have to, they went into that craziness as like we want to make a super detail. So and blend it well. So they went ahead and made all this stuff. As I said, like it's like old one and the new one, I think. They have more crazy, that is hardware get improved and it get awesome. And then Milan actually uh informed, but it's okay Milan. You're awesome. Uh when you get time, get back to it or something. But then I found this uh environment. I shared this thing and someone made this environment. And we although we are making also in a different design but it's a nice inspiration. For me, it is a bummer when someone else make the same things and I want I always try to make something unique. And that is that. And I made some changes uh in the master shader. I'm still not satisfied with the quality. I'm thinking about what I can do at this stage to make it better without changing everything. Uh for now, I will move to work on floor room. Yes. Just kind of this is like overall is is fine. It's okay just keep it and just move and like let's polish the floor, add more details. Add even parts like you see this part have really sharp base, add a bevel like round bevel at the base or maybe damages. So it look uh more nice and let's put a stone chair also. We put the same color theme in there and this border have already red blue thing. But we need to put more organic stuff. Like we can have uh we can add cuts, add damages, move things around. To make it feel more organic like we have put mo- most love here. So let's make it around also. It's all good, all good. Okay, keep up, keep up. And. And would you like gave feedback? I don't know if I posted it, I forgot to post it, but I was trying to make this uh. Send the composition again. So maybe I will just go into the back of the video where I don't know where it is, but I will just make it. In there. Basically, what I'm saying is this tree should be by the third floor like if I, let me get the pen tool. Where is my pen tool? Hmm. Here, okay. So, oh boy, it came. What? Okay. No, it is for the other one. Nice, okay. So if we, this is like first of all really wide but it's okay if you want to go with this thing. So what if I make it here? And here roughly divide by three by three. Maybe you want to keep it this way. It's like really wild cinematic stuff. So now uh. It's fine to have it in the middle also, your ground. Uh but what you can do, you can make it like this. Like Windows XP. Yeah. And first I'll suggest this tree, move it here, okay, here. So we have like this. And we have tree is growing like this. Okay, and you know this branches. Okay, so this tree is here and these mountains just move them here. So you have your first peak and the second peak and the third peak. Okay. So what is like for this rule and you can move this also like down here also. So you can make this from here to like that. So this tree comes here. Okay? So what did happen like uh near this point? And this this is pointing towards the mountain. Okay, so we got this flow of things. Okay, I can change the color and blue. Blue is not visible. Yellow. Okay. So you got this. Yes, simply composition wise. So like it's leading, this is leading the eyes here and. Rest of the thing is the rocks and everything is fine. They're like one thing I feel is these are all these rocks are like almost the same size. So few of them, you can have larger ones. Okay. And this tiny ones, like not all of them, like see there's like one pokey. And then second pokey and then third pokey thingy. And I can see it throughout everything. Okay? So you can have shallow and then imagine this tree is here and we have some space in the back. You can have a close up of the rock here. In here, which is a large surface and then you know this grass is growing here. Large and this tree is here and for here you can you know have shallow. This thing or maybe you can make a path also, like there is a path going here. The path from here to here. Imagine you put another tree here. So if you want to, you can put on in and there is another thing I feel like you can add bushes also. Uh at least keep one bushes, grass and this and at least have some bushes here and there. And it will be nice. Add add breakup in the scene. Yeah. And and this is round, smooth and when you will have this bushes. Here, it will add this nice chill out break in these lines. Good, nice. So like overall, it's like just the composition thing and and I will just not forget to screenshot it. And add it to the feedback. Okay? So yeah, so that's uh I wanted to so I'll just. Yeah. Then, okay. And we can say we covered some feedback on the. So you'll see like I I hope it posts, you will see like if I had seen if I just I move the camera little bit on the left. You will see the difference in there. And it's not, I'm not making this up. This I have seen a lot of uh. You know, shots and scene concept arts, everything just work in that way. Even if you try to follow, let's let's just go crazy. Hmm Ghibli, um Ghibli landscape. Okay, let's go with this. Matches. See here. And and if you divide like by three here, they is also like they keep the space empty. But if this castle comes here, then you have at bottom lower, you have this, some tiny details. Much more mesmerizing space in there. Let's see, let's see if, okay. Because now, because there is so much air, I'm doubtful also like if it's made by them. Because now because there is so much yeah I'm doubtful also like if it's made by them or by A I it's always crazy. And and there is this rule like if you want to showcase landscape more you keep two part of on on landscape like if I bring my. Then here also again and let me delete it. So imagine you want to keep a landscape more importance like if I divide this and you know this is it's not exactly. So here and here okay so the three by three so you keep your landscape towards those lines. But if you if your sky and the that it is more important you keep the landscape horizon at the bottom line. It's normal composite thing and I'm not again I'm saying I'm not making it up. I heard this I watched so many tutorials so many reviews. I even watched painting reviews like people doing you know the proper painting basically reviews. And that's basically now see uh if I now bring in here you see uh. Sky is more important now horizon is at this level. Okay, so if I delete it again, if I divide it again. One. Two. It's not exact but you can do exactly math also. So all up to you. Yeah, so you do this, okay. And now this pole is at this point here and it's their choice but uh and I will try to move this house here. Here at this point around this point basically and have this cluster here also this to be cluster and this cluster here. Yeah and then I keep the sky. And see this is there's stuff here there's stuff at this line even if it's little bit offset is totally fine I would still try to move it little bit here. Okay and I'm not as master as them but I'm a little doubtful also like if it's ex- exactly by A I I don't know. But I will try to keep it little bit here at least touching this point. Okay, so that's the true method. Like I just go like it's a rule. Okay, I will just go by the rules. So no need to. And that's a creative rhythm. We should have our own reasons why we are breaking the rules. So that's once we come to the practice and even we but now we try to you know break this one. Okay, so I will say okay this comes here and second line comes here and one. I think here and that's here. Now see, as I said, it's okay to keep things in the center also but you see. They have this line in the back and then there this line and this line and this line is is nice they made the steps. But at least house is at that point in the middle. You can keep things in the middle when you in a copper uh focus but then this and. And then usually imagine uh what I can add in here is some detail in here like imagine there is someone working here. Okay and in the field and they are doing something here okay maybe they have some stuff in here. So that add you know there is something here working in the farm and then the farmhouse done composition basically. Uh okay I might be wrong uh you can suggest the things it's just whatever I have observed what I will learn. So you just go with that. See here, same thing. So much more sky influence. I've seen I think Rohan Dalvi's tutorial based on this image. Uh as Lea might know who Rohan Dalvi is uh if someone use Houdini might definitely know. Uh yeah so his tutorial is there for this or Kame House I think is there but yeah. Composition is important. So like even if you take this one see. Uh. It's it's there like some break apart and then like it's not just flat it's there is some up and down will be there. So yeah so that's basically just rule the basic composition like if I show show show. Basic landscape composition rules. Okay. The first one is ruber third. Okay and there is a bunch of missing here. There is all 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 these things will keep coming up and I think there is one image which have all these things. Okay, you see arch is there, rule of third is there, this V is there, this perspective line is there. We don't keep all the things same uh if we are keeping balance we keep things in the middle. Right? Uh golden ratio stuff like that but if we keep the contrast that it works more better in there but yeah. Go crazy there is this there there are all the rules are there for a reason you see this one. So this mountain to tree. So yeah. Yes, that is awesome. So yeah, work on the composition. That's uh love to Vikra uh. Uh things are going bit slow uh don't try correctly focus on completing the wall textures let's poke. He already posted because it's already posted like might lose the the you know. Uh the thing. And Nippon also did some too much you know hurry to finish the scene. And. Less spoke there. Rosen. Less book once again. We go. We have poked enough people. So yeah, so that's I think uh. Enough for today. I hope, I hope anyone have uh any question, anything anyone want to ask before I. Warm my tea and get back to fun stuff. So yeah, let me know. If you have any questions that's good stuff uh keep going uh trust uh your scene is good looking good. Yeah, you're doing awesome stuff. That's craziness and. And if you feel stuck uh there will be no stream for at least for a month at least. Uh I'm busy till. Fifteenth of December at least I'm uh leaving this Friday and then back to back. Family visits, going places. So in between I will be checking the device, I will be updating. So if you know I will try to you know book uh you know draw some local feedback and everything write down resource and find stuff for you if you are stuck. Tutorials and other stuff uh I could do maybe I will do it but not the video one just to screen on. Uh streams okay in between if I'm able to so that much I can do in between. Uh the videos will be keep coming if you have any suggestions on those uh. Uh I'm doing portfolio. I'm not posting them enough on LinkedIn. So I will start posting them also. I recorded a bunch of art reviews uh yesterday the list is done. So we definitely more people will sign up. There's art talk so if someone is stuck want to discuss uh you know struggles of being a aspiring artist or a junior. What all the if you face some struggles want to discuss with me. Uh you can join in for the art talk which uh which I always appreciate. Because I get you to know about the struggles of the spanning artists. And then um yeah just keep doing the good work in the bootcamp keep sharing it with the people. Uh whenever I post it online please repost or share it with your friends whoever are there. And yeah that much is there and we're going to and I'm also trying to you know that's why I was trying to find a A I tool to make the audio. And that one is uh. Is important because I I try to dub it uh manually but it takes too much time. And then it's like a time I don't have. So I'm that's why I'm looking for A I tool. I installed one locally. It is working fine. So once I have this feature in there uh to put the dubbing audio I will see. Oh I will upload those thing and I will see I will take your opinion and feedback and yeah we'll see how it goes. And yeah. So it was fun. I really enjoyed it and I hope you also keep doing the good work. And I'm always there. Just tag me if you need anytime you need help. Just tag me uh in the chat and I will be there, okay. So under that take care and thank you very much for joining again today. You guys are awesome. Thank you much Leah Ed- Edward. Uh Milan Vishwas you guys are awesome. Thank you very much for asking question. I also welcome. Thank you very much for asking the questions and. I hope it was helpful. Uh keep sharing support to each other, keep sharing love and. Yeah, I will see you guys next time. Bye.